Thank you, Mayor.
All right, votes at 6:30. Let the Grantville City Council meeting come to order here on March the 27th. Shall we rise for the prayer and for the pledge allegiance? Our Father who art in heaven, howl be thy name; thy kingdom come, thy will be done, all earth is his. Give us this day our daily bread; give us our sorrows and distresses, as we forgive those who trespass against us. And lead us not in temptation, but deliver us from evil, but guide us to kingdom and power and glory forever. Amen. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic which is ours, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, as just a reminder for the council tonight, as I told you last meeting, we will be voting on items tonight. We will not only be voice voting, but you will raise your right hand. If it is an affirmative, aye, the right hand goes up. If it is a no, the right hand goes up, okay? So that Ms. Higgins can get a proper count, as we've had some problems with that. Anybody clear on that?
Yes.
Yeah, okay. All right, we'll go with citizens' comments to regarding agenda items. Ms. Cody, I believe you have a comment.
Thank you. My name is Simon Cody. I live at 214 West Grantville Road. And my comment has to do with the R-40 zoning district that is being proposed. And I just had a short conversation with Mr. Hauser, and he has answered some of my questions, but I'll pass them on to the city council. First of all, transitional densities. There's no definition here, and I was not able to find one online, so I'm not sure what transitional densities mean. Means. And also, I could not find where the zoning board has reviewed this application. So I'm assuming that if you vote tonight, that it will not, if you vote in the affirmative to make this change tonight, that you're doing it without the approval and recommendation of the zoning board. But I do, I do have some concerns, and I have voiced those to Mr. Hauser. He is the developer that has, that is so interested in that property over there. And like I said, he has answered some of my questions. So thank you very much.
Okay, so Ms. Cody, I will address that directly, like I will always do. We're only voting tonight to put a proposal in front of the zoning board for them to review, discuss, and then agree or disagree. And then, once that takes place, then it will come back to the council next month for us to decide.
Okay. Good enough. Thank you.
All right. And Mr. Mitchell, your comments are not in regards to the agenda tonight, so we'll take yours at the end, okay? All right. First item, approval, or second, I should say, approval of the agenda.
I'd like to add an item to the agenda, if that's possible. It's an item that I had planned to consider at the administrative meeting on the 20th, but you canceled my meeting. So I would like to add, to this agenda, if possible, is to consider Veterans Memorial, a Veterans Memorial location here in the city.
Okay, so is this an emergency item we need to take on?
It's not an emergency item. It's just an item I wanted to add to the agenda.
Okay, so on regular council meeting, which is a voting meeting, we only cover the items that were discussed in work session at the beginning of the month. And then, we vote on those unless it's an emergency, where we need to make some kind of decision on spending money because we have broken trucks or whatever else. So you're welcome to ask to put this on the agenda at the beginning of April.
Yes, I know. Yes, that would be fine.
So we won't put it on tonight. But let me also caution you that, that in, in putting an agenda item on, it is, it is not to be hashed out at this point. I mean, you have to have pretty specific details. In other words, what is it you're proposing? What is it you want to do? How will it benefit Grantville? What are the budgetary requirements? Where will the money come from? So if you can do all those, we'll be glad to talk about it.
Okay. Do we have a written policy in place, like when we want to put items on the agenda?
So the policy is basically that within the council meetings, according to Robert's Rules of Orders, and Mr. Mitchell, you can correct me on that, that the chairman actually directs the meeting, correct?
That is correct.
And one of the things I am pushing forward, after reviewing years of council meetings, is that when we discuss things in a council meeting, we've already begun to flesh them out. This is not the place to flesh something out to talk about. The rare is going to come from the budget, except for Mr. Wakehage.
Well, I didn't mean to interrupt you, but I think she, she just confirmed that she would pass this on to the work session.
Okay, but all I'm saying is, in the work session, you need to come prepared with an item that has details behind it. We don't just throw an item out and then discuss it, because there's nothing then to vote.
Okay. I was just inquiring as whether or not we have anything in writing. When you get new council members on board, they, this kind of helps to have policies in writing, you know, of how things are supposed to go. And I haven't been given anything like that, so I'm just swimming around.
So as an example, if you review your packet for tonight, which was the same packet that the work session was, everything has details in it on what's being proposed, what is going to benefit or detriment, for that matter, where the money's going to come from. Because if it's something that's beyond the budget, then we have to make sure and talk and explain to the taxpayers, we may have to raise their taxes to pay for something. So we can't just throw an idea out. That, that's just not going to work.
That's easy for staff, staff to put agenda items together. But for council members, you're expecting council members to create all of this paper, you know, background and...
Well, I would think if you have a plan on something you want to do, you've certainly gone about looking at the cost. You've certainly gone about, you know, deciding what it is you actually want to do, right?
Yeah, if we, if we, if it's a good idea and we agree to do it, we can have staff pull all that together, right?
Well, no, no, no. We won't agree to do anything until we know all the background of what it is we're looking at. They can't, they can't review anything if they don't know what it's going to cost. They can't approve anything.
Well, possibly, Ms. Berry can bring some information to the table during work session.
Yes, I will. Whatever I can pull together on my own, without the help from staff, I will bring it.
Okay. Mr. Clark does that. He brings me things, and he's already got them priced out. He's already got them done. And I'm like, well, great. So, so exactly that, yes.
Thank you.
Okay. Approval of the agenda. Do I have a motion?
Motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, we'll pass this. Approval of the minutes from the city council meeting, minutes February 27, 2023. Do I have a motion?
Motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
City Council work session minutes, March 13, 2023. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right. Decision on second reading ordinance number 2023-07 to amend Chapter 20 Terms of Office, Historic Preservation Committee, and other purposes. Just as a review, since this is now the fourth time we talked about it, as we're moving to basically have the terms of all of our committees, citizen committees, be two years, starting with January 2023 and expire December 2024, for simplicity's sake. Do I have a motion?
Motion.
Second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. Decision on the establishment of a new zoning district, R-40, to encourage the development of small tracts of land for single-family residential uses, with densities ranges suggested by the city council for the development of vacant parcels of land with transitional densities in built-up areas to encourage initiative site planning. Mr. Gresham, just a quick recount on this.
Yes, sir, Mr. Mayor and council members. We are requesting that a new zoning district, not R-40, a new zoning district called Historic Mill Village Zoning District. The suggested boundaries of the Historic Mill Village Zoning District are north of Cedar Street and Industrial Way to Arnold Street, and east of West Grantville Road to Grant Street. The new historic zoning...
Mr. Gresham, would you pull your mic in front of you, so we can all hear you?
I apologize. The new Historic Mill Village Zoning District would encompass all properties on, adjacent to, or abutting Industrial Way, Arnold Street, Oak Street, Elm Street, Maple Street, Pine Street, and Brady Smith Street. The intent is to include all properties or area of the existing Mill Village as we know it. The boundaries of the new Historic Mill Village Zoning District obviously are subject to the discretion of the Planning and Zoning Commission or the zoning administrator, or as we are only voting tonight, to send this suggested new zoning district to the Planning and Zoning Commission. The new Historic Mill Village Zoning District would allow single-family housing at eight units per area, per acre, with a minimum of 750 square feet of heated floor space. That's our suggestion to be sent to the Planning and Zoning Commission, so...
Okay, let me add a couple of things here. Currently, all of those parcels of land are zoned R-20, which require half-acre lots, 1,250 square feet of heated area. Not a single domicile in that area meets that requirement. Not one. In fact, most of them are on six to eight per acre. They're not sized to even cover that. Number two, there was a question of, well, what about R-6 zoning? Well, R-6 requires multifamily. We don't have a zoning that is single-family with the similar requirements. Three, this property that we're talking about does not include the mill property, which is currently zoned industrial, the 12 and a half acres, which is the mill property. It does not include that. That's zoned industrial, and until there is, the banks, no, the bank's not going to do anything with it, until the bank sells it and someone comes in and decides what to do, we're not going to address that property. But we feel like we need a new zoning to cover that district to be able to meet sort of the criteria of the grant before that. Discussion.
We gotta make a motion before we have...
Well, let's make a motion.
Motion.
Second.
Okay.
Can I amend it? To also refer to the Historic Preservation Commission?
It doesn't need to go before the HBC. They don't have a purview on this. It's purely zoning. It's a pure zoning issue.
Well, it's, they're currently with, that area is currently than our historic district.
Again, it's a zoning question. It's not a historic question.
Okay, well, that, make...
In, in, in the...
I'd like to make that amendment, see if we get a second.
Okay, do I have a second for that amendment? Seeing as I have no second amendment, the minute passed. All right.
With, with that being said, I think you already answered the question that I was, when Ms. Cody's come in at the beginning of the meeting, about a density question. I, I don't know how you could give it any answer, then it already is, or it's already voted. So I, I don't, and you addressed that, although I, I just, when, when I listened to your call in, I, I thought, well, look at the rest of the village. It's still in existence in its, in its events, area already, so...
So it's one of those on single residence, correct? Not like dual places, nothing like that? Can be built there?
Single.
Okay. Now, let me clarify that. There's always the opportunity that if someone, let's say, for whatever reason decides they want, they're, they have a vacant piece of land, and they want to change the zoning, you always have the right to go in front of the planning zone. But currently, what we're doing is single res... Correct. We're going to zone it on single-family, but with this new zoning rather than R-20.
Correct. So ultimately, it's going to end up looking like, we renovate, we renovate in the village. I mean, that's what this is all about.
Exactly.
To allow it to stay like it is.
Right. And the zoning, the, the density and, and all is, is very similar to what's already...
So this is going to help build the vacant lots that are in the building?
I can tell.
Or allow people to rebuild a house if something happens to it. Because right now, if something happens to your house, you, you're violating zoning if you're rebuilding.
Right. Thank you. That's all I have.
Mr. Mitchell, you have anything to add?
No.
Okay.
How, how, Mr. Mayor, how will we deal with the sewer capacity?
That has nothing to do with this. Most of those vacant lots already had sewer there anyway.
Right. Has nothing to do with sewer capacity.
Okay.
I get, I can tell from here, I guess I'd upset Ms. Cody, but I'm sorry with my comment. And the village is very dense already. Very, very dense. So I don't, anyway, I shouldn't address it. I'm sorry.
Okay, so we're sending this to the planning commission?
Yes. I'm gonna call for a vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed?
Aye.
Motion carries. All right. Discussion on first reading of ordinance number 2023-08 to repeal ordinance number 701 adopted December 20, 1998, City of Grantville Employee Handbook. Mr. Gresham, a brief recap.
Yes, sir, Mr. Mayor and council members. The present City of Grantville Employee Handbook is outdated, does not reflect current employee practices, does not include current benefits afforded to the employees of the City of Grantville, and is cumbersome to amend. We think it has outlived its useful life, and we recommend that the ordinance be passed and a new City of Grantville Employee Handbook be adopted by resolution at a later date when the ordinance is repealed.
Motion.
I have a second. So I'm sorry, we can't vote tonight. It has to go through two more council meetings. So let's just have discussion.
Just first read.
First read.
I know. Discussion. All right, moving on. Discussion on the first reading of ordinance number 2023-09 to amend Chapter 2 of Code of Ordinances to establish guidelines for scheduling and conducting council committee meetings. Mr. Mitchell, just a brief 30-second review.
Yes, sir, Mr. Mayor and council. As you know, you have, your charter provides for four committees, the police, utility, administrative, and streets, public works department. This ordinance would amend Section 2-25 of the Code of Ordinances to provide that those committees would only meet to consider or act on matters referred to them by the city council.
Discussion. Motion.
Is this...
We can't vote.
First reading. No motion necessary tonight.
Yeah, I have a question for the city attorney. Is this, this is an amendment to the charter?
No, ma'am, it's not an amendment to the charter. It is an ordinance providing direction to the committees as is allowed by the charter. Section 3-01 of the charter says, unless and until otherwise provided by ordinance, the mayor shall on the second Monday appoint committees. So the, the ordinance, or rather, the charter provision dealing with committees allows provisions to be put in place concerning the committees by ordinance.
Okay, so this is a, a process whereby committees don't meet, correct? Committees, they're appointed, but they don't meet.
Committees will only meet to consider items that are referred to them by the council.
Okay, so if I, okay, I, I was appointed to administer, administrator. So if I have an item, I put it on the city council agenda item?
No, so let's say we have an item on the agenda that, for whatever reason, can't get resolved in the work session meeting. Then, there can be a motion to say, we need to move, let's say it's a police issue. We need, we make a motion to move this item to the police committee to clarify and return to give to the entire council recommendations. And it will be one item, and then they would go meet whenever they set it up. They would be required to be there. They would come up with whatever the recommendation, come back to the council to consider for vote.
So the charter's saying that a council member is responsible for overseeing a certain department of the city?
Right now, I read that last section is not, is false. You're not allowed to oversee any part of the city government.
Is, this is, like I said before, this is confusing to me. I'm just...
The council, and vote these committees, and I didn't bring it tonight, but me, I'm sure Mr. Mitchell can pull it up, Section 2.09, right after that. If you want to read that third part.
Furthermore, neither the committee nor its chairman shall interfere in any way with the mayors, the city managers, well, let me, I got... Neither the committee nor the chairman thereof shall have any authority to direct the day-to-day activities of members of such department of the city government. Furthermore, neither the committee nor its chairman shall interfere in any way with the mayors, the city managers, or the individual department has authority to direct the activities of the individual employees in each department of city government.
Therefore, you can't tell that department to do anything.
Well, that, that's not, that's not the section I'm talking about. I'm talking about this section where it says each council member...
Each member of the council should chair a committee and serve on two other committees, and should be the duty of each such committee to oversee the activities of and to establish policies for the operation of one department of city government. And then, that sentence continues, as I just read, provided, however, that neither the committee nor the chairman thereof shall have any authority to direct the day-to-day activities.
The bottom line is, is that and the charter is poorly written. It basically contradicts itself. Therefore, the committees can do nothing. They can meet, but they, they have no function. Because you can't tell anybody in city government, city, anybody, what to do. You can't tell Chief Whitlock what to do. And, and so what we're trying to clarify is, what is the purpose of the committees? We could turn around and just change the charter and eliminate the committees. We could do that. But we felt, no, there will be a function for that committee at some point. So rather than do that, to clarify it, let's pass this ordinance.
One more question.
Okay. Anything else? Okay. Discussion on first reading of ordinance number 2023-10 to amend Section 2632 of the Code of Ordinances to revise the penalties for littering. I'll go over this real quick. Citizens complaining about littering, I don't like the littering. We're doing several things, but one of the things we're doing is we're raising the minimum fine to $500. Hopefully, people won't throw trash out. That's it. Any discussion?
It, it, well, is there, if the, the same individual is caught twice, what, you don't just pay twice?
Okay.
Well, I don't know if it was a speaker.
You don't have the official violator in the...
Yeah, that's okay.
The municipal court can fine someone by understating laws $1,000, so...
Okay. Any other questions? Discussion on first reading of ordinance number 2023-11 to amend Chapter 29, Article 1 of the Code of Ordinances on destruction defacing city property. Again, we have people defacing city property. We have no penalties within our ordinances to charge them of anything. So we're going to use this to create an ability to cause them to be fined, once we catch them. Any discussion?
So, uh, we'll have a misdemeanor, or we'll have...
It's a, it's a fine.
I'm sorry, right now, no.
It's a fine, yeah. And essentially, the fine would cover the cost of cleaning, like the skate park, or you don't have to say it.
Yeah, okay, you don't have to.
All right. Any other discussion? Decision on resolution number 2023-05 pledging to practice and promote civility in the City of Grantville. Mr. Gresham.
Yes, sir, Mr. Mayor and council members. This is an initiative of the Georgia Municipal Association that it is asking all city governments to pledge to practice and promote civility throughout their vigorous debate, and while maintaining the highest standards of civility, honesty, and mutual respect for each other, and to encourage the public to do the same.
Do I have a motion?
No motion.
Second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. Decision on resolution number 2023-06 Designating Authorized Signatories for the MEAG Power Municipal Competitive Trust. Mr. Gresham.
Uh, yes, sir, Mr. Mayor. Uh, the municipal competitive trust is a fund that is held by MEAG Power, and we put monies in there, normally monies that we get from MEAG Power from their sale or off-sale of electricity. We use it as a rainy day fund, and it is solid for the use of our electric distribution system. And they need this resolution to have signatories for, for withdrawing money from the municipal competitive trust, and especially since our mayor and council has changed.
Okay, and, and who is designed, who has authorized those signatories?
The mayor and the city manager.
Okay, just to clarify.
That's two signatures.
All right. Do we have a motion?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Any discussion? Vote?
Aye.
Motion passes. All right, decision on installation of speed humps on city streets.
Yes, sir, Mr. Mayor and council members. This issue came before you on, at your work session, and the chief did a presentation about Jenny Road and the cost of this. Uh, we also got a, a letter from a resident on Jenny Road, and one of the important things that this resident brought up was the speed humps, speed bumps, slow down emergency vehicles, and because there's not an overwhelming speeding problem on Jenny Road, she recommended that speed humps, speed bumps not be installed mainly because they slow emergency vehicles. And this individual had a stroke, and as this individual said, thirty seconds means a lot when you have a medical emergency. And we tend to agree with that issue. It is not anything against the residents. It is because emergency vehicles are slowed down with the installation of speed humps or speed bumps, and therefore, we do not recommend them.
Okay. Do I have a motion? Do I have a motion? Okay, just to clarify, if we don't vote, this comes back, it could come back in six months. Not that it necessarily would come back.
You're asking for a motion not to install?
No, I'm asking for a motion to install speed bumps. Do I have a motion? Then it fails.
I guess there can't be any discussion.
No discussion. If you want to make a comment, though, I would.
Well, I do. I, I, I support it, the speed bumps, and to some extent. You know, Jenny Road is unique to some streets in Grantville. It's a straight shot. And, you know, I, even though it was on the agenda, we still had the issue of what kind of speed bumps. And it's if we, if we approved them, just, you, you've got to take them by the city in its entirety. So, I, I'm, want to help the people on Jenny Road. That's a unique situation. It's a straight shot. It's an opportunity to help the speed. Uh, what I all said and, the fact that we don't know, that in the last meeting, it, it, there was a lot of difference in the price of one speed bump or another, and then it turned into a liability issue, depending on which one it was. So I think, I, I want to revisit this. I, I do support it in, in isolated situations, but the, I guess that's why I just didn't make a motion because if, what we were voting on was to put what, what, we don't know what kind of speed bumps over the entirety of the city.
Which could have happened, you are clear, isn't it?
We hadn't decided which ones it were. We didn't, we hadn't decided if, if it was just certain places or not. So I don't think we would have enough information of what fair or how to find it. And I just want the people out there to know that I, I want to help them with it. I think Steve's done everything he could do, and, and I want to revisit this one week, as soon as we can. We're more away from life.
Okay. All right. Decision on the purchase and installation of smart meters to replace and upgrade utility metering throughout the city of Grantville. Mr. Griesheder.
Yes, sir, Mr. Mayor and council members. We are suggesting that we buy and install what is called smart meters, meters that, that can be read from a tower. They send a signal to the tower. We are recommending census meters because we evaluated four vendors, and we found census was the most responsive, reasonable vendor. We vetted census meters with LaGrange Utilities that highly recommended them. And for our utility department, the meters themselves, we have very old meters. We have old gas, electric, and water meters. This will be an upgrade of our utility metering system throughout the city of Grantville. We think they will provide more accuracy and reduce personnel costs because with the software, we can tell residents about their usage. We do not have to do physical disconnects nor physical reconnects. We can be more timely on reconnects and obviously more timely on disconnects. But overall, we think it is time to replace our old meters and upgrade the utility metering system and save personnel costs, wear and tear on our vehicles, and we suggest it's an overall cost savings.
Do I have a motion?
Motion.
Second?
Second.
Discussion?
I do have a question on, how long does this one do I take to get completed?
So, if we vote on this tonight, we're meeting in two days with the company who will be actually doing this, because they're going to provide the labor. We're not settled to do that. It'll take one month to plan it, and then barring unforeseen circumstances, it should take eight months on top of that. So it'll be a nine-month project.
So, uh, our white public work will not be a part of this?
They, they, they will from a standpoint because they have inherent knowledge of like where some of the water meters are, et cetera. We don't anticipate that we're going to have to use a lot of them to do this, but they, they definitely will be involved.
And one thing I would love to see in this right here, if we can get this done, is an after-hours reconnection. Um, since, you know, we're doing this software, I would like to be able to see a, uh, at least some kind of like timeframe after hours, even if it's three or four hours after five o'clock, that our utilities could be reconnected.
Well, one of the benefits, and again, this is, this is a stage one of revamping the entire utility businesses, software capabilities, et cetera. Uh, we will certainly, I mean, I'm already thinking about it. You're absolutely right that there's no reason we can't have somebody, and again, we have to define who that is.
Yeah, I understand that.
To, to be able to do an after-hours cutback on. And we're also looking at some of the changes in the business practices of cutting off service as well, which will actually, I think, be a lot smarter. So, that, your point is well taken.
You know, I've always believed that water should never be cut off, I mean, under.
Well, I won't go into the details of what we're looking at, but, but it, we will be discussing that, so.
I have a couple of questions, Mr. Mayor.
Mm-hmm.
Um, you said it's going to be stage one, and this is a, a million dollars. So how many stages are there?
Well, the main stage is to get the meters in, to be able to now move them to modern meters. And then the next thing will be is an evaluation of upgrade of billing software, accounts receivable software, accounts payable softwares, which have been upgraded in over ten years, which will resolve things like eliminating service charges if you want to pay online, being able to more easily pay online, set up recurring payments, get bills in the mail instead of walking in the city hall with your bill through the mail. So we're, we're not really addressing that tonight, but this is the stage, this is the first thing we absolutely have to do.
Yeah, one more question.
Hold on a minute.
Yes. So we don't know the total cost. We're spending.
No, no, the total cost to do the meters. This is project number one.
And that is a million dollars, just for the meters?
Yes.
But we don't know the total cost to bring everybody, how many customers do we have? Utility customers?
We have, what, fourteen hundred and fifty roughly? No, we know the total cost. That is the total cost.
That's the total cost to put?
All electric meters in place, the towers, everything.
Okay, and this is, this has been reviewed to, and determined that this is the best use of funds for our utility company. This is the best use of funds for our utility company, what we need, what we need most.
A vast majority of the citizens who I met during the campaign wanted massive improvement in our ability in our utilities to make it, never said the rates would go down, but they all said we like it, we're customer friendly, we want to know that our meters are working properly, et cetera, et cetera. And I read about it all the time. This right here is one of the biggest things we can do to improve the Grantville municipal utility business.
And where is this, the in, the increase of our sewer capacity, where is that?
That has nothing to do with this.
That, what is part of what we're responsible for as?
No, it's not. It has nothing to do with meters. It's a totally separate project.
I know it's totally separate, but I'm just thinking about, we've got to spend this time, money, and we've got to spend it on what is needed the most.
This is needed the most to have the biggest impact to the citizens.
And who is recommending this?
We are.
We are.
Who is "we"?
The utility department, Joan Henry, and I vetted the four vendors.
Okay, so this is a staff recommendation to the city council?
With, if you define staff, yes.
As our most urgent need to spend a million dollars just to get meters. Okay.
Smart meters.
Smart meters.
I just want that question. Okay. All right, let's make sure she says.
And you, um, you sent out bids, you've got four vendors that responded to the bids. This is a million dollars now.
We did not send out bids. We requested proposals from four vendors as rec, the four vendors were recommended by the city engineer, and we talked with each vendor. That was about two years ago. And since then, we've been vetting out the vendors to see if they were in any other jurisdiction, and census meters are used by Coeina County Water and Sewage Authority, Hogansville, and LaGrange. In fact, we met with LaGrange to get detailed information on the census meters and to council member Clark's position of being able to cut people back on, cut people, uh, back on or disconnect people. Patrick Bowie, their utility director, went through the whole software package that comes with the meters after you purchase them, you purchase the software, and described it.
Okay, so we have followed the purchasing process, and we were getting a new contract going, okay? It's a lot of money. No one has this, ma'am.
I have, I have a comment.
What's that, David Gantle?
Go ahead, David.
Okay, so like last year, December, November, several people addressed the council then about being charged for gas, even though they don't want to use gas. Uh, will this be able to like fix that problem? Because, you know, I don't see why they should be charged with them. But the number would be like, what, like fourteen ninety-five or something a month?
If it is the policy of the city, and until that policy is changed, that if you have a gas meter, you are charged the service availability cost whether or not you use that gas meter at all. Same with electric, same with water.
Okay. Mr. Griesheder.
One thing about this, and I've talked to the mayor about this and the city manager, that the labor savings that will come about by putting these meters in, and I, I trust them that to use that savings wisely. But you imagine that the savings after these meters are put in, that we have enough money to hire on the line.
That's just, that's just a thought.
Well, look at, ultimately, what I'm saying, the savings after, the labor savings after putting these things in could obviously be used for something more beneficial. And that's just one.
So let me give you an example of what's going on right now. With another problem we're working on is water. We had to go to read meters, and let water lines continue to leak, because the same people reading meters are the ones who fix the water lines. So let me be very clear. This isn't going to be like, oh, so they can lay off a bunch of city workers. No, we can now push them on to things to do better. And as far as alignment, again, that's a, that's a discussion of.
Uh, but it's just an example of what we could potentially use to make.
Absolutely.
For one future.
Okay. Yes, that is.
I'm just checking on the software store. I'll see it online. Once you purchase the meters, you get the software. Is it upgraded with this purchase, or do we have to pay for upgrades every so often?
So, we have a license on the software, and generally with licensing, the upgrades come with. Okay. All right, we've had a motion. Any more discussion?
Is there any projection on how much you've got to save dollar-wise?
No.
No?
All right. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Opposed.
Motion passes. All right. Decision on appointment of Charlie Andrew Williams and Chad Long at the Historic Preservation Commission. I will ask, are they in the audience tonight? People are busy, I understand. All right, do I have a motion?
Motion.
Second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. Decision on the coach, uh, appointment of Melissa Wallace to the Parks and Recreation Advisory Board. Melissa, are you in the audience tonight? Again, busy people, I understand. Do I have a motion?
Motion.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right. Decision on the application for a special event permit requested by the Grantville Kiwanis for Kiwanis Family Fun Day and Movie Night on April twenty-second, twenty-twenty-three from four to nine P.M. on the hill behind the Malcolm Clements Building, Griffin Street Park, three twenty-nine Griffin Street, rain date, April twenty-ninth, twenty-twenty-three. Do I have a motion?
Motion.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. Decision on the application for a special event permit requested by Change Church for a recovery rare of breed concert tour on Wednesday, April twelfth, twenty-twenty-three, from four-thirty to eleven P.M. on the Ballfields Park Drive. Do I have a motion?
Motion.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion?
Could that, what is this, a rare, rare breed? Oh, that's the name of the?
The band.
The band, oh.
Yes.
I'm guessing maybe I don't work out of the county, correct?
Yes. All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. Mr. Griesheder announces.
Yes, sir, Mr. Mayor and council members. The water meat protection program for the city of Grantville water utility customers has been established. There are signup forms in the city clerk's office and online at our website. There will also be forms in the March Utility Bill.
And let me say, we don't have lots of people signing up yet. I am one who's signed up. Two dollars a month to cover you for a thousand dollar water leak with some of our houses, please, please. I, I already had one contacting me today who said, I had a leak, and I'm like, sorry. So please, 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 sign up. All right, next, Mr. Griesheder.
A four-day work week for city hall employees will commence on April the fifth, which is a Wednesday, twenty-twenty-three, April the fifth. Police Department operations will not be affected. We will still have our patrol officers on duty twenty-four-seven. Senior Activity Center, our senior center, will not be on the four-day. They will be. Senior Activity Center, our senior center, will not be on a four-day, they will be open Monday through Friday of every week, normal hours unless there is a holiday. So the senior activity center is open Monday through Friday. However, a four-day work week for city hall employees will commence on Wednesday, April the fifth, twenty-twenty-three.
Okay. Mr. Mitchell, citizens' comments? You know the drill, state your name and your address.
Hello, my name is Dustin Mitchell, I work or live at twenty-five Chelsea Lane here in Grantville. Uh, just, I was asked by the, the rest of the Parks and Recreation Advisory Board to make a statement this evening, uh, call it like a quarterly type thing for us, it's been three months since we began working together and working to improve our parks and everything. Um, some concerns were raised, uh, over the last several meetings we've had, as well as other items. And basically, as far as I know, we were under the impression that we were supposed to report to the council for any kinds of repairs or replacements, um, that the parks needed, um, therefore basically kind of making us the overseers of projects in this manner. Um, we were to report to you anything that's needed, basically you guys would, you know, do a cost assessment and vote on it and then let us know, you know, what we would need to do to, uh, fix said issue. Um, during our initial meetings, uh, we were instructed, um, by Mr. Mayor here that basically money was not an object when it came to, um, repairing, replacing, and fixing the parks because they're, they need it, they're in dire shapes. The, uh, Post Street is, and, and I'm sorry, Post Street and Griffin Street are downtrodden to say the least, and Merryweather is nothing to speak of whatsoever there, uh, except a few, um, decrepit, uh, picnic tables and a, for lack of a better term, a Walmart-grade, uh, basketball court, uh, being held up by tires as far as I know. Um, we were asked by quotes for which parks we deemed the most, uh, the most necessary to repair or replace things first. Uh, we were requested this several times, and we actually did provide on several occasions, uh, fixes for, I believe, Griffin Street, I believe Post Street, and I know for a fact Merryweather, as Merryweather was our main focus because there's just nothing there. Um, catch up to my notes here. Sorry, and once again, and that was, you know, for our January meeting, and I wasn't a part of the, the board yet there, but I became a part later. And, uh, in our, uh, February meeting, once again, we were told, you know, money is not an object, you know, get us these quotes, and we want to get the ball rolling on this stuff as quickly as possible. Um, the problem kind of arose when we came to, and, uh, Mr. Mayor and I and, uh, the rest of the board members have discussed this at length in our meetings, but just bringing it to the other coun, council members' attention as well, that basically, am I?
One more.
Okay. Basically, we were told more or less to forget about the parks right now because there is no Parks and Recreation Manager, and the Parks and Recreation Manager is the person who oversees these projects to make sure that the contract is being honored, to control the contract and all that kind of stuff. And that as citizens, even though we are a council-appointed board, we are not qualified or allowed to oversee such projects. Um, so we just wanted to bring that to y'all's attention there, and, uh, as well as the, the dog park for Grantville that we have been looking into, uh, we were, uh, instructed by Mr. Mayor that we were not allowed to, well, not allowed, but there were many things that had to come into effect first before the dog park could be created, i.e. hiring a park ranger apparently, and several other, other things, I don't want to waste too much of my time here. Uh, we actually reached out and spoke to, let me get his name here, a Mr. Mike Furbish of Newton. Uh, he is in charge of the, I believe, the city engineering and beautification of Newton. And we put to him several questions just for somebody that has a dog park already, just so we could verify some of the issues and whatnot. And, uh, if you guys don't mind, I do have a list of our questions and his answers that the council can read at their leisure. Um, if you don't mind, may I hand it to Robbie and she passes it out to you guys? You get what's wrong? They're not stapled, but they're, they're divided up.
Okay.
So in a nutshell, you know, basically it says, um, no park ranger is needed, it's unnecessary, um, a very small crew of people, um, weekly would be there to clean it up. Um, and I have to remember some of the other things he said. Basically, some of the basic things were, um, Mr. Mayor felt that if there was, that there may have been a liability on the city, uh, due to if, uh, if a dog bites their owner or something like that. Uh, but just simply when we put up our rules, there's a disclaimer we can put on there that owners are liable for their own animals. Boom, city liability gone. Um, so with that, you know, we just, we believe that, um, obviously I don't, I don't want to go out on a limb and say that Mr. Mayor deceived us or lied to us, I don't believe that, that was the case of what happened, just possibly mildly, uh, less informed, and we just hope that this will, uh, put some of those things kind of down at ease. But the biggest thing is that I was specifically asked to request with the council is to know from you guys, what authority does the advisory board have? Uh, like I said, we were instructed that.
Mr. Mitchell, answer that question, please.
Yes, sir, it's set out in the Code of Ordinances, section two dash one sixty and two dash one sixty-one clearly sets out what the purpose, powers, and responsibilities of the Recreation Advisory Board are. Would you like me to read those?
If it's not a, a book.
Uh, the Parks and Recreation Advisory Board is established to enhance the lives of current and future generations of Grantville's residents and provide vision, leadership, and recommendations to the city council for the best use of development of Grantville's parks, trails, open spaces, and recreation programming. The powers and responsibilities are the board serves as an advisory board providing recommendations to the city council on matters of the Parks and Recreation Department which pertain to the planning, programming, evaluating, and funding of park and recreation facilities and programs in accordance with local and state law. The board shall annually prepare and present to the Grantville Planning Commission a prioritized one-to-five-year comprehensive plan recommendation that includes collaboration with Coeida County's long-range Parks and Recreation Goals, and the board shall revise this comprehensive plan each fiscal year to reflect current citizen priorities and needs.
Okay.
So very, very clearly set out.
Okay, I'm trying to understand a lot of that, I'm, I'm just a double constructed.
So what, what it basically says is kind of what I've been telling you all. And again, I, I appreciate all you're doing, this isn't this case, and I'll, I'll clear one thing up, but you're, you're simply an advisory board, you have no authority to spend money, to do anything, all that authority resides within the council and/or actually the city manager, because some of the things you all want affect day-to-day operations of the city of Grantville, which the, actually the council has no purview of. So you're an advisory board.
Okay. Well, as an advisory board then, uh, and as speaker of that advisory board, fellow or council members and mayor, we do strongly advise that Merryweather does get some form of park soon, there's nothing there, it's terrible.
Let me, let me clarify, initially with all the gung-ho-ness and wanting to do things, I was corrected by our Department of Public Works that, Richard, we can build it, but we have no people to maintain it, we have no one to cut the grass, we have no one to pick up the garbage, we don't have anybody really to oversee any of the building of it. I mean, we don't have the staff, I, I could put someone out there, but that means someone's pipes out there in the streets don't get fixed. We are down three headcount in public works. And I already said that we're going to, first, first we need a supervisor, director over Parks and Recreation. We don't have a Parks and Recreation Department, we need to create that, and we're working on that. And then secondly, then it's going to be a determination on, what are the resources we're going to need to maintain? It's not a matter of, I want to build this park, you got to maintain it. Right now, there is no budget, no funding to maintain a park, none. So we've got to establish that. So that's why we're backing off on building or anything else right now till we get someone who can be over all that within city government, because you all can't hold liability on that, you can't hold responsibility. And again, I appreciate everything you do, trust me. Right now, though, we, we've got to take a step back, and we've got to be smart about it and understand the budgetary needs, et cetera. Because I don't want to say it, but you know, we may build a lot of parks, we may have to add people and budget, and then I'll have to tell them after, oh, and this is why your taxes are going up. So you have to, you know, there's a lot balancing act that needs to go on here. So I just want to make sure that's clear.
I understand. And as far as, uh, getting the manpower up and anything like that, uh, there's so many things that we contract out already, is there any way we could look into contracting something like that, or even establishing?
Well, even contracting help to do the parks, we would want them to report to someone in the city government. And as I told you all, Monday night, it was Monday night, Tuesday night, Tuesday night, is, is, we need to get that position hired, help me get that position hired, and then it all flows down healthy.
We do intend to have that hired, as a matter of fact, that night we were going to, we looked online and.
We had, we had to make some changes somewhere in the line there.
Yeah, so, okay, thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Mitchell. All right. City and staff comments, city council, Mr. Williams.
Thank you, everybody, for coming, there, there was good participation, and I thank everybody's efforts just trying to help. And I hope to see you in the next meeting, thank you.
Ms. Adams.
Again, same as well. Thank y'all for coming, um, I look forward to all the things we're moving forward with. Also, um, I just wanted to, my app, my Grantville app has been working well, it's been notifying me of all the things going on, good and bad, so I was excited that that was working well.
Ms. Clark.
Yes, I just want to, um, say thank you for everybody who's staying after every event that we have, and helping clean up, put stuff up, and like, you know, and take some of the work off of us. And also I want to thank the Grand Police Department for, uh, dealing with the situation of a couple, you know, unruly people on Saturday night immediately, after they saw the issue was there, they took care of it, and the guy was escorted off the property. And that's pretty much all I got to say, thanks for coming.
Ms. Barry.
Yeah, thank you, uh, Mr. Mayor, I was just hoping that we could acknowledge some important things like this March is Women's History Month, it's an opportunity to recognize the contributions made by women to, to improve life and for the whole nation. Um, I had a comment about the four-day week that we're, we're, four-day work week for the staff, did not come before the city council, so I'm just wondering if this is permanent, if it doesn't work out, would it come to the city council to be addressed, to change it? And that, I just had a couple of questions about that because it did not come before the city council. Um, I've been really busy this month, March the first to the third, I was in training up in Athens with, uh, Mayor and, uh, Councilman Clark, and learned a lot of things. Um, on the tenth and the eleventh, I attended the Coeida County Citizen Summit, and that was very informative, learning about the services that are available within the county. On the twentieth of March, I went up to, uh, Atlanta to Representative Smith's office. Uh, the chamber was given, the, the Newton Coeida Chamber of Commerce was given recognition for their seventy-five years in, uh, service to the community, they were celebrating their seventy-fifth anniversary. And then, uh, the twenty-fifth, they had a gala event, and I was there for that. Um, the only negative thing that happened to me this month was, as I mentioned, my committee meeting was, I came to city hall and I was locked out, so I didn't, wasn't able to do my committee meeting, and I'm still wrestling with that to see how best I can make some, give some positive input about administrative issues that we need to address, there's more things that need to address that are part of, are administrative, so I'm still working diligently in that area. But thank you for coming out to, uh, to the meeting, it's great to look out there and see your, your smiling faces and what we're doing here, thank you.
All right, Mr. Gresham.
I have nothing, thank you, sir.
Mr. Mitchell, do you have everything you want to say?
No, I do not, Mayor, thank you.
I just want to thank you all for coming out, do I have a motion to adjourn?
Some move.
Second. All in favor? Uh. We are adjourned.
I like these.